Good evening. I called this Pine Bluff City Council meeting of October 1st, 2012, to order. Okay, maybe we have a roll call please?
Alderman Hawke?
Here.
Alderman Brummett?
Here.
Alderman Easton?
Present.
Alderman Stemp?
Yes.
Alderman Walker?
Present.
Alderman Boyd?
Yes.
Alderman Brown?
Here.
Alderman May?
Here.
Thank you. Each of you have a copy of the minutes from September 17th. It's been moved and promptly seconded that the minutes of September 17th be approved as presented. All in favor of that motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? The motion carries eight to zero. Alright, we'll go into our committee reports, ordinances and resolutions. Mr. Sokol.
Orders and resolutions met prior to the meeting. We're gonna finish one through four. Number five will be read the second time. Number six will be read the first time. Number seven will be read the first time. Number eight will be read the first time unless someone requests something different. Resolution nine through twelve will be read. And we have several other resolutions to add to the agenda. Number fourteen is the one dealing with the farmers' millage. Number fifteen is one dealing with the joint purposes millage. Number sixteen is the one dealing with the public library millage. Number seventeen, police relief and pension fund millage. And it has been suggested that we pass all of the millages with one together, in one reading, if that's satisfactory. Number eighteen is a resolution dealing with the children home fund for years 08, 11, and 2012. I move that we add the following items to the agenda.
It's been moved and promptly seconded that we add the additional items to the agenda. Maybe we have a roll call please?
Alderman Hawke?
Aye.
Alderman Brummett?
Aye.
Alderman Easton?
Aye.
Alderman Stemp?
Aye.
Alderman Walker?
Aye.
Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Brown?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Motion carries? Mr. Sokol?
Oh, that's how you say it, through twelve. I missed the part of the meeting that missed thirteen.
Thirteen is on the list.
Hey, but you said seven through twelve.
Oh, I'm sorry. I could've said seven through thirteen.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Brummett, Ways and Means, please?
Yes, Mayor. The Ways and Means Committee met prior to the meeting. We have three budget adjustments that were in your packet. As far as some concerns, accumulated sick leave and vacation pay for employees retiring out of the community development department, total is thirty-two thousand nine seventy-six point forty-five. And these funds are gonna be available through the position of Zunkfield, an assistant director within that department. So it's all within the community development department, no impact on the general fund. I move we accept this budget adjustment.
Second. It's been moved and promptly seconded that a budget adjustment in the amount of thirty-two thousand nine seventy-six point four-five from community development be approved. Are there questions? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? The motion carries eight to zero.
Mayor, we have a budget adjustment from inspection and zoning department. Basically, it's for gas, living oil, code books, postage, dues, subscriptions, additional demolitions, and lot clearances they need to carry through the end of the year. And the money is gonna be transferred from unused salaries, overtime, and expense within the department. So I move we accept this budget adjustment.
Second.
For twenty thousand one hundred dollars from the inspection department.
It's been moved and promptly seconded that a budget adjustment for demolition, lot clearance, fuel, and postage to be funded internally within the inspection department of twenty thousand one hundred dollars. There will be no funds coming from the undesignated funds, so this is all internally. Are there any questions? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? The motion carries eight to zero.
The next one, Mayor, comes from the street department. Due to higher fuel prices than what was budgeted, higher consumption in 2011 due to favorable weather nor their able to do more work.
Yes.
Additional repair and maintenance, budget needed due to equipment breakdown repairs and so on again from the fact that we did more actually paving, in other words, within the department. The total is a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. You all see the breakdown. Within the department, the money will be moved from street overlays, repair and maintenance of heavy equipment, and street maintenance funds. So again, the money is from within the department. I move we accept this budget adjustment from the street department.
Second. It's moved and promptly seconded that a budget adjustment in the amount of a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars funded from within the street department. Funded from overlays and street maintenance budget to cover higher fuel prices and higher consumption due to good weather in 2012. Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? The motion carries eight to zero.
Mayor, we have a copy of the regulatory base's financial statement, another report from the legislative joint audit that was done on the city. There were two, three minor things that were found involving copies of some checks, and that has all been resolved. And I'd just like to present a copy of this with official record to the clerk. Mayor, I move that the city owes the bills.
Second.
It's moved and promptly seconded that the bills of the city be paid. All in favor of that motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Alright, the motion carries eight to zero.
I can close my report, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Brummett. Alderman Walker, Economic Community Development?
Yes, Mayor. Community Development Committee met on Friday. And we approved the awarding of the 2008 through 2012 of children's funds to CDC. For to finish up the housing, some repairs, well not repairs, improvement in the area that they were working in addition to building four homes. That was added to the agenda.
Yes. Said it?
That's it.
Alright, thank you. Public Health and Welfare, Alderman May's?
Let's have a something to read. If any citizen in any ward needed ditch cut or clean, you know, it raining continuously over the last few days, they can call the street department at 543-5101. Now, while we didn't have a back flood this time, we see it was draining a lot better because the street department went out and started cleaning out some of the ditches, and they're cutting them also. So if you have a problem with that, you can call 543-5101, the street department. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Alderman Boyd, Public Works?
No report, ma'am.
Alright, thank you, sir. Mr. Steps, Development and Planning?
No report, ma'am.
Alright, Mr. Easton, I'm sorry, Alderman Brown, Traffic and Aviation?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Administration, Mr. Easton?
No, I report, but when, how long before we probably, the budget?
Pardon me?
How long before we get the budget, you know, have an idea yet?
Will it come to the council?
Yeah, when, I mean, when we'll start looking at it to...
Let's see, change our side.
Budget schedule, the mayor will present the budget to the council at the first meeting in November. And that's what was involved in the past.
I thought we usually got it a little ahead of that, so we should've started on doing maintenance and stuff, doing...
That's...
Is it close to being ready, or is it, y'all pretty much close, not yet?
You just got the submissions. Actually, there's some submissions outstanding. The process put together.
I was kind of wondering when we...
Our goal is to get it in the packet before, the Wednesday before that meeting, so there would be some lead time ahead of that. That's traditionally the timing that we met each year.
It has been in recent years, but before that, we used to get quite a bit earlier than that.
No, sir. I follow the same schedule.
Not since you've been here, but before that, we used to get a little...
I follow the same schedule Mr. Boosier's followed, and the first council meeting in November is when we got it to the council. That period's scheduled.
I thought we got a little sooner than that. Well, it's fine. It doesn't matter just long. I just want to know when we was getting...
I had to go back and get any of those old schedules for you.
Anything else, sir?
No, I just...
Thank you. Public Health, uh, public safety as well.
Public Safety Committee met at four o'clock with all committee members present. I'm not gonna be redundant and read... Each, the police department has a monthly report that's at your desk, as well as the fire department, which is the office as to what's legal and what's not legal. So they are actively working with community groups. And everything else is in very good written form, and each person should have a copy. Even Allen Control has how many livestock, dogs? A very good report. They do a good job of getting their reports out. But one thing I do, on the last, the last time we had a council meeting, Fire Chief Howell had a diagram of a new facility, and he was not afforded the opportunity to pass it around to the council members in a formal setting, and I think that he should have that opportunity now if he would, if he'd like to.
Real quickly, first of all, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I just do a quick update. I gave an update real quick on the bond projects. We have three major projects, purchasing of the fire trucks, remodeling two fire stations, and build a new fire station. I gave an update real quick, and I just... We actually received fire trucks on Friday. Fire trucks actually here, physically here. They're not ready to be put in service at this time. We have to be trained on them. We have to finish the flipping and loading all the equipment on there, so this is early next week to actually get them at the fire stations. But they are officially in our possession, training facility, finishing the preparation then once they want to get trained on them, they'll be put in service.
This one, who, Blake Boyer?
Stations number three, which is Murderton Ash, station number four, which is Montclair School on Commerce Road, and station number seven, which is on Ridgeway. Those are the three stations, three, four, and seven. They'll be replacing those trucks out there in those stations. And this is a recovery, share this on, I think I'm letting everyone see it at once. They're 2012 E1 brand fire trucks, standard art, latest technology, latest safety features, closed air cabs, which is a big feature for our safety of firefighters, no one is riding outside anymore in the elements. They can wear a seatbelt, they're safe inside the cab. That is one of the major features of the newer improvements. It's no longer allowed to make open cab trucks for federal standards. You have to be enclosed in the cab, so this will complete that transition. Even through our reserve fleet, we will have no more open cab fire trucks throughout the fire department. So we just want to thank everyone that voted for this tax increase, which allowed us to get the bonds, which allowed us to get the fire trucks, improve our fleet. The next was our remodeling project, along with their product. We had two stations, fire station number two, which is on Pullen, next to the cemetery off the interstate there to Dr. Martha Mitchell, and number six, which is directly behind Old Dale's on Dalloway. Those stations were built many years ago where the fire service was male dominant. Now we have more females coming in, and we have one common bathroom, one common bathroom, but it was rather large, you know. It was large enough to be able to cut it and have make two separate individual bathrooms to accommodate male and female. That was one of the major improvements. As you enter the fire station, we have a very small common area that was served as a kitchen, lounge, foyer area, everything, but we had to cover the porch. So we're gonna enclose that covered porch and expand that space as you make entrance into the fire station, as well as general improvements, painting, floor covering, cabinetry, just general upgrade for these two stations, and I have drawings of those positions. First one, I'll send around, station six, which looks like says I don't know, but this is about... This is two on Pullen Street, down that way. And I didn't bring the other one back. The architect wanted it back for the new station. He asked for that rendering back because he wanted to make it larger. It was a smaller rendition of it, but we'll have, I'll have it back as soon as he gets it to him. And that archi, this work, the remodeling project, we've been done by Fred Reed, architects locally. New station has been AW Nelson, is doing that workforce at the new fire station. Remodeling projects are on schedule pretty much to be completed this year. We have a resolution here tonight to agree to entering the contract with Bristor, which is the construction company that got the low bid for the subcontract work. So that's where we at with the updates on the projects, the new station proceeding with acquiring the land. Mr. Matt, have you had any updates on the land purchase here lately? The land is at the title company, going through the documentation, so we're moving forward with actually acquiring the land for the new fire station, so I'm not if you can speak to that for us.
Yes, we submitted the necessary papers to the title company. There was an alley that was closed on the property that was never recorded, so correction deeds had to be made in order for the entire property to be placed in our name. Those correction deeds were sent out to the heirs of the property who were out of town. We received two of them back. We were looking for one back as of last Wednesday, once we received that, we can do our formal closing of Pine Bluff Title. We anticipate that to happen this week, according to Pine Bluff Title, and we have possession of the property, as well as we'll be ready to start with the sewer improvement clearing, a number of things that will take place once we get it.
That real brief is what we've been working on feverishly throughout the fire department, those major projects, you know. Our firefighters and everyone should be well pleased with the fire trucks, and once they get out, in the very near future, we'll have a formal press conference dedication and put those fire trucks in service and get these remodeling projects on their way. Things are looking much better for the fire department.
Chief Howell, what will happen to the fire trucks that be built or replace it?
The, we use the recycling process. That's why we have a reserve status. The immediate ones that are being used right now are going to reserve. The ones that are currently in reserve status, we'll put up for sale. We'll put those up for sale. So we'll rotate the oldest ones completely out of the fleet, and they'll be, they'll be put up for sale. A lot of times, we have interest from volunteer fire departments throughout the community or surrounding area and things of that nature, so that's common practice to put them up for sale.
Is kind of a timeline on the renovations and the new...
The renovations, there ain't no setbacks or anything completed this year, at the renovations of this year. The new construction would quite naturally be 2013, barring no setbacks or early 2014. Alright, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Say that, Mr. Sokol?
Oh, that's it, that's...
Alright, thank you.
End of my report.
Thank you, ma'am. If you would, take us into committee reports. I'm sorry.
Orders and resolutions?
Orders and resolutions, yes.
Have orders to close the alley located between Cherry and Linden Streets and Seventh and Eighth Avenue up for the final, third and final reading.
An ordinance to close the alley located between Cherry and Linden Streets and Seventh and Eighth Avenues.
Move for adoption?
It's been moved and promptly seconded that an ordinance to close the alley located between Cherry and Linden Street and Seventh and Eighth Avenue. Floor is open for discussion. Mr. Steps, do you have anything you want to add to it? No. Hearing none. All in favor of the, in favor of the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye. Any opposes? The motion carries eight to zero.
Have orders to close a portion of Parker Avenue between 803 and 903, Moreland Street up for the third and final reading.
An ordinance to close part of Parker Avenue. That's all I have.
Move for adoption?
Second.
I'm sorry, I didn't have it on my sheet.
It's been moved and promptly seconded that an ordinance to close a portion of Park Avenue be approved as presented. All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? The motion carries eight to zero.
Have an order, ordinance to close part of Cottonwood Street and all of Cottonwood Circle up for the third and final reading.
An ordinance to close part of Cottonwood Street and all of Cottonwood Circle.
Move for adoption?
Second. Been moved and promptly seconded that an ordinance to close part of Cottonwood Street and all of Cottonwood Circle. Any discussion?
Yeah, I want to add a little bit, just, the rest of them also, this is what they're gonna, they're trying to make it safer out there, for patrol environment, with the gates. People come through, slide the gate on.
Thank you, sir. Hearing none or the discussion, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? The motion carries eight to zero.
Have an ordinance to close part of North Bel Air and South Bel Air, West Bel Air, and Bell Mead Drives up for the third and final reading.
An ordinance to close part of North Bel Air, South Bel Air, West Bel Air, and Bell Mead Drives.
Move for adoption?
It's been properly moved and seconded that an ordinance to close part of North Bel Air, South Bel Air, West Bel Air, and Bell Mead Drive. Any discussion or comments on this matter?
It's also, you know, to keep it safe out there also.
Hearing, thanks, sir. All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? The motion carries eight to zero. Thank you.
An ordinance to close a portion of the alley located in Block 18 of Eureka Heights Edition Number Four, between West 13th and Lee Northwest up for the second reading.
An ordinance to close a portion of the alley located in Block 18 of Eureka Heights Edition Number Four, between West 13th and Lee Northwest.
Place it on the calendar. Have ordinance amending Article Three of Part 13 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas concerning the basis for calculating the city's privilege and occupation tax for daycare and childcare centers up for the first reading.
Whereas it is desired to alter the method of calculating the privilege and occupation tax assessed childcare and daycare centers in the city, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, Section One, daycare or childcare center means all establishments falling within the definition of daycare center and daycare family home found in Section 29 dash two of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas. Section Two, Article Three of Part 13 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, is amended to add the following as new section, as a new section 1391, privilege and occupation tax daycare and childcare centers. The privilege and occupation tax for daycare or childcare centers in the city shall be calculated by multiplying the actual weekly attendance of the children in the facility by ten dollars per child. Actual weekly attendance is determined by calculating the total attendance of the center for the previous year and dividing by fifty-two. If the center is not open all year, then actual weekly attendance shall be determined by calculating the total attendance at the center for the previous year and dividing by the number of weeks the center was open. The entity shall maintain regular enrollment and attendance records which shall be available for inspection by the city collector at any reasonable time. The owner or operator of the center shall verify under oath the average number of children actually attending the previous year preceding assessment of the tax. Section Three, the amendment shall not apply to privilege and occupational taxes already due and payable by an entity.
It has not been due to committee. Okay, so it's been to the committee. Madam President?
General Committee?
Yeah.
Alright.
Okay, we have an ordinance provided for the rezoning of certain territory in the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, level fifteen, Commerce Road, up for the first reading.
Whereas the City of Pine, whereas the City of Pine Bluff Planning Commission held a public hearing on September 25th, 2012, as provided for in Section Six, Act, Act 186 of the Statutes of the State of Arkansas, the purposes of which was to hear any and all persons interested in amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Pine Bluff by providing for the rezoning of certain property. And whereas it has been expressly stated by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff that the zoning ordinance should be amended to provide for the rezoning of said property, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, Section One, that the following described property be and the same is hereby established and defined be one neighborhood business for all future purposes as set forth and defined in the zoning ordinance. Part of Section Twelve, what's that, T, T six S, R nine W, more particularly described as beginning in the beginning, five hundred and thirty-four point two feet north and twenty feet east of the northwest corner of the southwest one-fourth, thence north, four hundred and sixty-six point sixty-nine feet, thence east, four hundred and sixty-six point seventy-three feet, thence south, four hundred and sixty-six point sixty-nine feet, thence west, four hundred and sixty-six point seventy-three feet, to the point of beginning, five acres. Section Two, all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict herewith are hereby repealed to the extent of said conflict.
It's been to committee? Yes. So we'll place it on...
Does this have to go to planning? Planning Commission?
No.
Oh, it's already been, okay, thank you.
We'll place it on the calendar. Okay, we have ordinance consenting to the change of control of the cable television franchise up for the first reading.
Whereas Friendship Cable Arkansas Incorporated, doing business as Settling Communications, owns, operates, and maintains a cable television system serving Pine Bluff pursuant to the franchise agreement or similar authorization issued by the City of Pine Bluff, and the franchisee is duly auth, is the duly authorized holder of the franchise. And whereas Sequel Communications Holding LLC, Sequel, the parent of the franchisee, has entered into a purchase and sale agreement with Nespresso Acquisition Corporation pursuant to which all of the issued and outstanding equity interests of Sequel will be acquired by Nespresso. And whereas the franchisee has requested the consent of the City of Pine Bluff for the change of control of the franchise in connection with the transaction, in accordance with the requirements of the franchise and applicable law, and has filed with the franchise authority an application on FCC Form 394 that includes relevant information concerning the transaction and Nespresso. And whereas the City of Pine Bluff has reviewed the application, examined the legal, financial, and technical qualifications of the relevant parties, followed all required procedures to consider and act upon the application, and considered the comments of all interested parties. And whereas the City of Pine Bluff believes it is, it is in the interest of the community to approve the application and the change of control of the franchise in connection with the transaction as described in the application. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff that Section One, the City of Pine Bluff hereby approves the application and consents to the change of the franchise in connection with the transaction, and all in accordance with the terms of the franchise and applicable law. Section Two, the City of Pine Bluff's approval of the application and its consent to change control of the franchise in connection with the transaction shall be effective immediately, and Settling Link shall notify the City of the closing of the transaction promptly after the closing date, provided however this ordinance shall be null, I'm sorry. Provided however, the ordinance shall be null and void if the transaction is not consummated. Section Three, the provisions of this ordinance are severable, and if any provision, paragraph, or word, or section of this ordinance is invalidated by any court of competent jurisdiction, it shall not affect the other provisions, paragraphs, words, or sections of this ordinance, and the remaining portions shall continue to be in full force and effect. Section Four, all ordinances and parts of ordinances inconsistent or conflicting with any part of this ordinance are hereby repealed to the extent of such inconsistency.
Okay, can they go to the committee?
Yes. Public of the planning, you go, Mr. Sokol. As well, or Public Works?
Public Works.
Public Works?
Have a resolution supporting the move to amend campaign by joining with other communities around the country, within democracy, by amending the United States Constitution to ensure only human beings, not corporations, have constitutionally protected free speech rights.
Whereas the United States Supreme Court has asserted by a five to four majority that corporations have the same free speech rights as human beings, and whereas the United States citizens, who are human beings, have and should continue to be valued more and enjoy greater inalienable and constitutional free speech rights than corporations, businesses, business associations, or unions. And whereas money, money is not speech and should not, and should be able to be constitutionally regulated as regarding political contributions and is used in political... regulated as regarding political contributions and is used in political campaigns by candidates, other entities attempting to influence political decisions or votes. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff that the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas hereby expresses its support of the national move to amend campaign to defend democracy by amending the United States Constitution to ensure that only human beings, not corporations or other associations, have constitutionally protected free speech rights and to reject the premise that money is speech. Section Two, the City Council, that the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas hereby request that Arkansas legislators on the state and federal level also support an appropriate United States constitutional amendment to ensure the First Amendment's free speech right protected, are protected, real people, protect real people rather than corporations, associations, unions or other entities.
Move for adoption?
It's been moved and promptly second, that a resolution supporting the move to amend campaign by joining with other communities around the country to defend democracy by amending the United States Constitution to ensure that only human beings, not corporations, have constitutionally protected free speech rights. Floor is open for discussion. It's over.
No discussion.
Any other individuals who'd like to discuss this matter? If not, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Any opposes? The motion passed seven one.
No discussion helped because if I started discussing, you probably would. Probably would rouse somebody.
All right.
A resolution supporting legislation to improve sales tax collection information from the Arkansas Department of Finance and Administration.
Whereas the Arkansas Department of Finance Administration collects sales taxes levied by cities and counties in Arkansas under the same administration system that is used to collect state sales taxes and as such, local taxes are piggybacked along with the collection of state sales taxes. And whereas the city, the state withholds an administration figure three percent from local tax collections to fund the cost of such service, which totaled approximately thirty million dollars in two thousand and eleven. Whereas all taxing entities are entitled to have information about the collections produced by taxes levied in order to monitor, evaluate budget and project the tax collections to which they are entitled to receive. Whereas existing Arkansas law does not authorize or require DFNA to provide information to local governments that is useful and satisfactory to monitor, evaluate budget and project local tax collections. And whereas laws in the neighboring states authorize and require the release of information that is satisfactory to serve the needs of the local, of local governments mentioned above, which includes tax collections identified by specific taxpayer and that the experience in such states demonstrates that related procedures and reports can be efficiently administered and produced and that similar laws can be adopted to administer, and administered in Arkansas. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, Section One, the City Council supports amendments to the Arkansas, to Arkansas laws to authorize and require information to be provided designated representatives of local government that will permit them to fully and successfully monitor, evaluate budget and project local tax collections. Section Two, that any information that can be identified with a, with a specific taxpayer shall only be released following an agreement to keep such information confidential and such specific taxpayer information shall be exempt from release under the Arkansas Freedom of Information Act and related laws. Section Three, that the information will be A, made available for monthly collections and calendar year-to-date by regular mail, email or by dedicated online account as the option of local governments, in electronic worksheet or PDF format, no later than thirty days following the most recent monthly tax distribution. B, include details and totals that will agree or reconcile the related tax collections distributed by the state collector, state treasurer to a local government for particular, for a particular month. And C, be updated as required by subsequent adjustments due to refunds, rebates, additional tax payments and any other affecting the tax collective for a particular period.
Move for adoption?
It's been moved and promptly second, that a resolution supporting legislation to improve sales tax collection information from the Arkansas Department of Finance and Administration. I'm going to ask Mr. Miller if he would please come up and give us a little background on this particular piece of legislation and why we brought it forward.
Okay, the Arkansas municipal league under the leadership of Paul Young, the current finance director, has prepared legislation to request that the legislature require them to give an A to release more detailed tax information. Paul published three articles on the subject, you know, describes the problems that we have when we've requested information from the DFNA. The totals don't tie to the sales tax we collect, oftentimes they're lower than seventy percent of the sales tax. And the reason for that is if there is less than, three or less businesses in a code, it's called the NAI CS codes, it's basically a business description, then they won't report that code. And, and that can exclude quite a bit of your sales tax dollars and then it varies from period to period. Sometimes a code is included in one period and then not in the other. So it, it makes the information really not usable. Other states that surround Arkansas do give detailed information to the, you know, local, the cities and counties so that they can understand their sales tax. For us, sales tax is two-thirds of our revenue and most cities in Arkansas, it's, it's a high percentage of revenue. We, you know, issue bonds against sales tax, a lot of our planning, you know, is based, predicated on understanding sales tax. The legislation was presented to the Arkansas Government Finance Officers Association Summer Conference and received unanimous support from all the finance directors there at that meeting.
Go ahead.
I think this is a good piece of legislation. We need to collect our taxes. And as, as a small business owner, we conscientiously pay our taxes, but I think you're going to issue it.
Next, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Would this assist like the Airtime Promotion Commission? You know, we have trouble validating how much money they ask, you know, in other words, a restaurant or a hotel, motel, singles, an amount of money. Would this help us to reconcile those numbers against the numbers that are coming in on sales tax? Because we've not been able to get that information to, because of percentages, you know, you ought to be able to take one and pretty well extrapolate the other. Will this help us get that information as well?
I believe it would assist.
It should.
It would give us, you know, a taxpayer.
Well, that's, that's an issue we've been dealing with over there and we're trying pretty well to define it, but if we were trying to get that information, they wouldn't give it to us.
Right. Well, one of the things, DFNA, Department of Finance and Administration, they charge each municipality three percent for collecting this data. So, but they won't give you any information that's helpful to you. So, with the fact of the matter is that it's automated now, that three percent is just basically gravy to them. You know, they don't have to do the bookkeeping and things of that nature, everything's computerized. So that's why we'd like for them to give us additional information that'll help us be able to collect our taxes, project our taxes and actually like Mr. Brown was saying, do a comparison between sales tax and, and restaurant tax sales that people might be underreporting. Yes? Yes, sir.
It's three percent equals to thirty million dollars levied on fees, right?
Yes, sir.
So are we saying that we, to get some of that, thirty million?
No. That's what they charge all municipalities.
Right.
Or we're not saying anything about getting any of that money, but what we want them to do is provide us with additional information to help us be more productive in collecting the revenue that we should be collecting and providing us with data to help us do a lot better job of planning in the future. See, back when they started this, you know, everything was, wasn't automated. So the three percent probably covered a lot of costs with everything now being computerized, you know, that's just three percent of thirty million they got. That, that they're doing nothing for, basically.
I guess our thoughts would be that since we're paying them, we ought to get the services.
That we asking for, yeah, get additional data that would be helpful and information would be helpful to us in collecting our revenue. Yes, sir.
Hopefully we'll, I'll have an amendment shortly that will help with the collection of our taxes that are paid on the hunger tax and things.
Yes, sir.
That will have legislation that before the committee shortly that will help us to have some leverage to these people that are stealing from the city. And that's what they're doing. These people, they're collecting the taxes and then not paying it to the city, they're stealing. I mean, they're absolutely, that's what they're doing. They're not paying their money and it needs to be, and so we're trying to have legislation hopefully be.
Yes, sir. Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Hearing none, all in favor of the legis, the legislation, let it be known by saying aye. Any opposes? The motion carries eight zero.
A resolution requesting the Arkansas Highway and Transportation Department study the feasibility of relocating the pedestrian walkway over the Martha Mitchell Expressway to Lake Saracen area or constructing a new walkway in the Lake Saracen area and in the Dollar Way School area on Highway Three Sixty-five for the protection of pedestrian traffic.
Whereas there is a pedestrian walkway across Martha Mitchell Expressway between University Avenue and Cherry Streets intersections. And whereas with the development along Lake Saracen and the increased activity in the Barakew Plaza area, there is a need for easy and safe access across the expressway between Walnut and State Street intersections. And whereas it would benefit the city for a pedestrian walkway to be located across Martha Mitchell Expressway between Walnut and State Street intersections. And whereas the feasibility of relocating the current walkway from its present location to the Lake Saracen area should be explored or alternatively the construction of a new walkway, of a new walkway. And whereas the feasibility of a walkway over Dollar Way Road to promote safe and easy access to the Dollar Way Schools, Schools property from the north side of the roadway should also be explored. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff that the Arkansas Highway and Transportation Department is requested to conduct a feasibility study regarding the location of the existing pedestrian walkway over the Martha Mitchell Expressway between the University Drive and Cherry Street intersections further south, further south on the expressway to between Walnut and State Street intersections to promote safe and easy access to Lake Saracen from down, from downtown Pine Bluff. The department is further requested to explore construction of a new walkway at the Lake Saracen downtown Pine Bluff location if relocation of the existing walkway is not desirable, as well as the construction over a, over a walkway, of a walkway over the Dollar Way Road or at or near its intersection with School Street to permit safe and easy access to the Dollar Way Schools campus from the north side of the roadway.
Move for adoption?
Been moved and promptly second, that a resolution requesting the Arkansas Highway and Transportation Department study the feasibility of relocating the pedestrian walkway over the Martha Mitchell Expressway to the Lake Saracen area or constructing a new walkway in the Lake Saracen area and in the Dollar Way School area on Highway Three Sixty-five for the protection of pedestrian traffic. Okay, so floor is open for discussion.
If only the feasibility study with the highway department, is there a fee for them doing this study and the sort of pay?
Okay, I, they did evaluate that, Mr. Mays, at one particular point in time and the one down at Cherry, of the Martha Mitchell Cherry is not wide enough to extend across Saracen Landing area, right there where it would need to be. Therefore, they said it wasn't feasible. I will follow up with them to address the issue once again. There is a cost associated with it, I can assure you of that. What that cost is, you know, I don't know, but at the particular point in time when we looked at it back in two thousand and six, it was more than what we at that particular point in time could manage or deal with. But we'll find out what cost might be associated with either particular situation. One, I, I think feasibility study needs to determine if there's a need out at Dollar Way. I, I'm not sure if there's a need out there for that.
Safety and, you know, increased walking traffic across the street to, for sales and the businesses, students and Saracen Landing. What we are looking at is, is going above fifty thousand in the district. That would be something good to have from Saracen Landing, you know, to the courthouse where the courthouse where people can walk over to Saracen Landing. And we're looking at more activities and entertainment at Saracen Landing, plus pulling it into downtown in the, in the future.
Yes.
I think we all need to look at increasing the population back up. I think it's, it's a good thing.
Yeah.
I believe we all can agree that it's going to happen again one day.
Yes, sir.
Just, we just, what we're doing is positioning ourselves for the future, that's all.
Okay, I, Glenn Bell's organization did the analysis last time, I'll follow up with them to see that information that they have and we'll see basically if this can be, if it's feasible to do that.
I have no problem supporting the resolution, but as you say, Mayor, I know this has all been looked at in the past. On Dollar Way Road, for example, we spent sixty thousand dollars putting a crossing with the lights and so on back when Dutch King was the mayor, because a little girl that ran over there by the school. And so there has been, maybe to, to, to do that.
At the same time, I understand that we're looking at increased growth at Dollar Way also in the future. I mean, we're looking at, we're looking down a road. Yeah, your business, huh? I know. No, I mean, it's just a, it's not, it's going to be on the other side, on the north side, you know, the north side. We already looked at it. I mean, it's something to look at and I, I would consider a vote, so we can just get it out there and just look at it.
Excuse me one second, yes, sir.
There's going to be, I, I just know it's going to be a cost. Frankly, I think we should find out almost some kind of idea what it would cost for that before we go and pressure on that, on that feasibility step. That's what I, I think, I think we need to have a cost analysis first. And then, you know, it, this may be, this may be a good thing, but we need to have a cost analysis first.
Well, you know, cost analysis as well as a market study needs to be done, so that's what we probably would be asking of them, Mr. Mays, prior to really committing to anything. They probably will not commit to anything without understanding what they're committing to.
Well, you look at your price upfront, if we look at all that upfront, it's just looking at growth at Dollar Way School, High School, Dollar Way School District and looking at entertainment and activities at Saracen Landing, a crosswalk where the people can walk down, all the way down Main Street, we won't care. I mean, they just, if you just go ahead and, and vote on it and, and put it out there, if you don't mind. And then we'll see what it costs, the cost upfront. We know it's going to cost something, but let's see what it, what it's going to cost. If we're looking at growth in the future, I mean, it's worth it.
Well, listen, Mayor, all I'm saying is, and that is, this is not the first time it has come up, it has come up on several other occasions, signs from Parker left, had it up four or five years ago or something. And I, I don't exactly know what to answer for at that time, but evidently it was a not, it, it turned out to be not a working project. They didn't work it. But it, it has come up before and they did not work it for whatever reason, whether it was, it was enough, it wasn't enough traffic for it or it wasn't, it wasn't financially feasible. It was one of the two, I don't know exactly, but this is not the first time it has come up. As far as the resolution may be the first time, but as far as the idea, this idea has been floating for a while.
Yes, sir.
I, I, I think that one of the things that you want to look at, especially if you want to feed the bill, is that how much use you're going to get out of it. The one that I know that we get, people will walk around and cross the fence before they go up and walk across, therefore in a safety. You know, you got one at UAPB very seldom to use and the one that we have here, having here on Cherry Street, people just stopped using it and crossing over the fence, you know, that, it takes a lot of money to put, to, put those there. And especially you're talking about crossing one all the way over to downtown, you getting ready to get into some mega bucks. And, and they, they tried this and they, they checked the studies and things out, it was so much, it was going to cost so much money that it wasn't even feasible to even do it. I would support the resolution, but anytime there's going to be a substantial amount of cost that's going to be to it, and I think that's where I would draw the line.
And you mentioned the UAPB, that one will be disassembled. You know, while they're widening.
Right.
University Drive, but it is, it's not feasible to use it anywhere along Martha Mitchell. Mitchell.
They can't bring it back, that doesn't work.
They aren't gonna bring it back, they're gonna disassemble it.
Maybe they can.
They won't put it back. And it's due to, to the lack of use and things of that nature.
I'm just saying that, you know, just asking you all. I understand it was an idea of our back out, now it's, it's on paper and it's just, it's fresh, just want you to look at it and see what the cost's gonna be, I mean, before we do anything. That's all I'm asking.
We should look at the cost first.
Yeah.
So we do it pass the legislation before we move it off?
You can, because a resolution is a non-binding form of legislation anyway, but it will allow to go ahead and pass it and allow the administration to check and see what the possibilities and costs are, and bring it back and see if it's feasible to do it, and, I mean, it's, it's a...
Has it been to, has it been to committee?
No. Who would you like for to go to committee, sir?
I have to agree whatever y'all say. I'm just, I'm just, I'm just at that point, just, it's, it's a fresh idea, if, if, I just don't wanna die again. It's alive right now because we're talking about it, but that's, that's, you want to make the call.
No, well, we have to make sure, if you wanna vote it in there, or vote it up or down, but all of these ideas and things that we have, that's why we got committee assignment. I have a standing committee meeting, everyone at the same time. If we would all adhere to the committee assignment that we have and go through the proper procedure, then we won't have to get here on the council floor and make a thing like that, we're not trying to support you. But if you can have a committee meeting instead of standing time, then we'll either know to be there, and if we don't show up, then we could be, you could present it here. But you, you bring these things hot off the press to us, and this is the first time we've had a chance to look at it, then you want us to make a decision right then and there, then if we don't, you feel like we're not trying to support you. It's not that, I don't have no problem supporting you, but we got to do the thing the proper way, we got to go to vote calls, the way we have these, and it's not being done, that we, if I wanna vote for it, we can vote it in and put it out there, and let them take a look at it, but I don't want it to sound like that every time we come here when you represent an idea that we're against you. It has nothing to do with you. It's whether or not we're doing the right thing at the right time, and therefore, it hasn't happened, and, and the last time I asked you, bring it to the committee, and let us see, can we support it, but you won't have no committee meeting, you won't bring it to nobody's committee.
It's not my committee, oh, I'm just, now, that's not my committee.
Okay.
Once again, everything I bring up here, just, just to clear it up from the public on television. May I speak, sir? It is not that I bring it up here right then, they, a lot of items I bring up go to committee. This one here, if they wanna send it to committee, that's fine, that's just protocol.
Well, Mr. Mayes, then, if, if you would, you're, you're asking us to do three separate and distinct things here, so that's what, if you would send it to committee, that would probably be a much better way to deal with this, because, you know, you're asking for Lake Saracen, it's bill, the bill won, you're asking, the bill won at Dalloway, you're asking to remove the existing one at Cherry and possibly use that, so that's three or four different options right there, and that, that...
I understand, I understand, Mayor.
Okay.
I'm just asking, that's why I ask what, send it to council, send it to committee, or vote it up.
Okay, would you, would you have a problem with it going to the committee?
No, sir, no problem.
Are you on Traffic and Aviation Committee?
Yes, sir.
Then that's your committee.
Well, Brown is the chair.
Yeah, well, that's, but you are a member of it.
Yes, sir.
So that's the committee it should go to, and y'all can do the traffic study.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Well, hold on, say, we can do the traffic study.
Yeah.
We just work that out.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll work it out.
Right.
Just wanted to clear it up. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Have a resolution authorizing the mayor to contract with Bristol Construction Inc. for renovation of fire stations number two and number six.
Whereas the city solicited bids for desired renovations to fire stations number...
It's been moved and promptly seconded. I don't think we had a motion seconded. Oh, we did? Okay, we have to rescind the motion and second on number eleven, said it could, to committee.
Yes, we're...
Yeah.
Withdraw my motion.
Your second, I think, yeah.
I withdraw the motion.
And you withdraw the second.
Consent.
All right, thank you. Okay. All righty, a resolution authorizing the mayor to contract with Bristol Construction Inc. for renovations to fire station number two and six. Floor is open for discussion. I, I think Chief Howell has kinda discussed this with, with you regarding what's been taking place, you got, you got the job numbers on the back of the information. So what we're trying to do is move on with the construction. So if there are no other questions, all in favor of the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? The motion carries eight zero.
Have a resolution providing for placement of costs of correcting certain notices on tax books as the legal taxes and collected as such.
Whereas our...
Moved and promptly seconded, Mr. Smith, yeah.
Being that it's important to remove the following problems from that list, and all of y'all should have a copy of that.
Sir? Uh, sir?
I have a second.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, all in favor of the amendment as presented, and what did you present as the amendment, sir?
Uh, the amendment.
Oh, okay. What did I do with it? Oh, yes, it's mine, right. Okay. Okay, the amendment that removes the fallen liens from the resolution. Each of you have a copy. All in favor of that motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? Motion carries eight zero.
Move for the original as amended.
I'm sorry?
Say, original as amended.
Okay. Okay, I, I wanted to kinda address Mr. Smith's thing and ask Ms. Ruth to come up on that matter.
Oh, okay.
We didn't, didn't deal with that one.
Okay.
So we need to...
I was gonna bring it up also.
Ms. Ruth?
What are you here with, Mr. Reverend Smith made his presentation?
Yes.
What is, what is department's position, ma'am?
Our position is that Mr. Smith started a house in ninety-nine, he got a permit.
In ninety-nine?
Nineteen ninety-nine. And I have, we have pictures of what he started, we contacted him in two thousand eight about cleaning up his, the property that he started, and he stopped the contractor from cleaning it up. We didn't do anything else with it, he was notified in February of two thousand twelve about basically the same condition. And once it was cleaned up, he also signed for that notice, and did it out, and once it was cleaned up, he came to the office and said he needed his material back. I believe he contacted a couple of the aldermen who went out there to see his foundation.
He contacted, uh, the fourth ward, the three hundred thirty-six dollars, that's was the fee for, uh, that work of the gun.
Yes, sir. Yes.
That's the lien, sir.
I have pictures for whoever would like to refile, but, you know, this was something that was going on since nineteen ninety-nine that he did not clean up or build his home.
I have one coming.
Can I give him some time to speak?
I think he probably need to go in private consultation.
Right. You don't give time, sir. And also, Ms. Ruth, let me just ask that y'all get together afterwards. Okay. Okay. Now, all in favor of the original as amended? Let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? Okay, the original carries as amended.
We have resolutions fourteen through seventeen with similarities, and we're gonna read, read one and then Mr. Smith will read the other.
Okay.
Okay, another good suggestion, just read titles only for something.
Three titles only, that's okay. Okay. Okay.
Mayor, there, there needs to be a, there, there must be a separate vote on...
So we can read titles only, it's a separate vote.
Okay. We have a resolution setting millage for the farmer's relief and pension fund for the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas.
A resolution setting the millage for the farmer's relief and pension fund for the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas.
Move for adoption?
It's like it. It's moved and promptly seconded that a resolution setting the millage for the farmer's relief and pension fund for the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas. Each of you have a copy of this resolution, this is something we do on an annual basis, we just didn't have it as part of the package, but I think everybody should be familiar with, with the millages. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? The motion carries eight zero.
Have a resolution setting the millage for the general purposes as authorized and prescribed by law for the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas.
A resolution setting the millage for general purposes as authorized and prescribed by law for the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas.
Move for adoption?
Seconded. It's moved and promptly seconded, is there any discussion on this matter? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? The motion carries eight zero.
Have a resolution setting the millage for the general purposes as authorized and prescribed by law for the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas.
A resolution setting the millage for general purposes as authorized and prescribed by law for the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas.
Move for adoption?
Seconded.
It's moved and promptly seconded, is there any discussion on this matter? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? The motion carries eight zero.
Have a resolution setting the millage for operation and maintenance of the Pine Bluff Public Library.
A resolution setting the millage for the operation and maintenance of Pine Bluff Public Library.
Move for adoption?
Seconded. It's moved and promptly seconded, are there any questions regarding this particular resolution? Hearing none, all in favor of the matter, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? The motion carries eight zero.
Have a resolution setting the millage for the policeman's relief and pension fund for the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas.
A resolution setting the millage for the policeman's relief and pension fund for the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas.
Move for adoption?
It's moved and promptly seconded, are there questions regarding this resolution? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? The motion carries eight zero.
Have a resolution awarding the Jefferson County Community Development Corporation Chodo Home Funds for the years two thousand eight, two thousand eleven, and two thousand twelve.
Whereas the Jefferson County Community Development Corporation is recognized by the city as qualified community housing development organization as defined by the regulations of the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, and whereas it is the desire of the council to award JCCDC the Chodo Home Funds for the contract years two thousand eight, two thousand eleven, and two thousand twelve as funding for its activities to develop new low, to develop low-income housing. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, Section One, that the Economic and Community Development Department is directed to pay JCCDC Chodo Home Funds in the amount of eighty-two thousand five hundred dollars for the year two thousand eight, one hundred thousand dollars for the year two thousand eleven, and fifty-one thousand eight hundred and sixty-four dollars for two thousand twelve. In addition to the Chodo Home Funds, the Economic and Community Development shall award JCCDC eight thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for two thousand and eight, ten thousand dollars for two thousand eleven, and fifty-one hundred eighty-six dollars for two thousand twelve for operating expenses in accordance with the guidelines set forth in twenty-four CFR ninety-two three hundred through twenty-four CFR ninety-two three oh one, and all, and all other federal, state, and local laws which govern the use of these funds.
Move for adoption?
Seconded.
Yes, sir.
It's been moved and promptly seconded that a resolution awarding the Jefferson County Community Development Corporation CH Chodo Home Funds for the year two thousand eight, two thousand ten, and two thousand twelve. All righty, the floor is now open for discussion. Are there any discussions on this matter, or comments? Ms. Walker?
Uh, no, we had a meeting and it was discussed, and we voted to send to the council for approval.
Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? The motion carries eight zero.
That's all I have for orders of resolution, but I, we need to set a meeting for public safety and public work, because I think they need to work on the police facility, and the quicker we make a decision, I guess, the sooner we'll be able to work on it, so what would be a good thing?
Do we have a, do we have a picture there in the middle? As it was asked to be read out?
When you said the figure's on the new building.
Mr. David, would you come up?
Excuse me a second, I'm, I'm trying to ask this question, what is...
It was asked to be redirected.
Oh, you mean, building a new?
Yeah.
No, we, we haven't done that, haven't completed that yet. Committee has done that.
Okay, well, he, he, the reason I was calling him up is because he had, he had announced that we, that they were working on it.
Yeah.
Okay, the next thing, and I'm not, I'm not trying to take your announcement, Mr. Mayes, but I have been approached by several people about the mosquitoes, particularly, you know, places in wooded areas, like out in Southside, up around Bayou and other places, about spraying for mosquitoes, not only out there, but all over the city, because people have become concerned about the West Nile virus, so...
We've, we've been in touch with Jefferson County Health Department.
Okay.
And, and they assured us that they are spraying much more frequently than they have been. You know, I, I don't know if they need to use a new chemical.
What happened all of a sudden, they weren't here, they weren't here in August and July.
No, they, they said the rain and, and the warm winter just plopped them out again, so...
You know, 'cause they live close to the water.
But one of the suggestions they made is that if you have standing water anywhere near your house, please empty it. So, you know, that is absolutely a good thing.
In those places where the bayou and all that run, they can't empty it.
No, they go empty the bayou, but you can empty any containers around your house, and we are asking the street department to, to handle the cutting and clinging, clinging of the ditches and things of that much more frequently, so they are doing that.
Five minutes, Arkansas, the West Nile virus is here.
Yes. Yes, they are aware of it, that's why they are working.
Mayor Reed said that they were spraying more frequent than they have been.
In the past, yeah.
So they sprayed one time.
I think more than that, I hope.
They have, they have been citing that.
I have one question I didn't, you know, ask at the time, but, you know, with the renovation of the fire station.
Mm-hmm.
I know that the bids from Malvern and different places like that, no one in Pine Bluff would bid on those.
You know, people bid it from all around the state, all around this region, basically.
But we didn't get any from Pine Bluff.
I don't have the list of bids, I, I don't know.
Do you know, Chief Howell?
It was advertised locally, and some of the bigger contractors had subcontractors from Pine Bluff, but no one general contractor was in the running, so it was advertised locally, and that's what we got.
Okay, when you say locally, it was...
In the Pine Bluff commercial.
Yes. As well as the Democrat.
All right, thank you.
We have no speakers after the meeting, so will entertain a motion.
I didn't notice the whole family back there also.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you.